When I realized what was in the centers, everything I wrote from last count third day was lower than half a spring goes in.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. We will call to order the regular meeting at the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 2nd, 2017. I'd ask tonight that we begin the meeting by standing and observing a moment of silence in response to the tragic events that happened in Nevada last night. Then we'll continue on at the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen, thank you very much. Tonight, as the city council meets in a regular session, we are ever mindful that today or yesterday ended up being one of the most tragic days in American history, and we are struck by this, the whole problem of just the unsettled world that we live in and the crimes and activities that take place because of it. We just ask for blessings and guidance on all those who are wounded or suffering and their families, and all those who are having to deal with this terrible situation. We know that our country is strong and has always has come back, so we are confident, again, that it will once more. Tonight, as always, we are ever mindful that in our own community, we have people who are in troubling ways, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. Along with the special blessing that we always ask for at every meeting, to guide and cover those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving in defense of the liberties of the United States in our military services. Also, we want to ask for direction and understanding and guidance as we act on the various items of business before us, and we are here tonight to continue to resolve, to do the very best we can to make Batavia a grand place both for today and for future generations to live in. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Yes, amen.
Alderman Atack, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Your.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the recordly selected thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen are present and accounted for, so we have the necessary forum to conduct business. I'd also like to recognize in the audience retired alderman Rick Ford, who was there in the front row. He's brought his daughter down to experience government firsthand, and Rick served a number of abold and very honorable years with us, and was a contributor on some of the major issues that we had before us in the past. So, Rick, it's good to see you, and nice to have you back. Okay, moving then to items to remove, added or changed on the agenda. You have anything, Alderman Atack?
I don't have anything this evening.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, then moving to the consent agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Yes. The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file Committee of the Whole minutes for August 22nd, 2017, and August 29th, 2017. Plan Commission minutes for August 30th, 2017. Tree Commission minutes, October 13th, 2016. August financials, 2016 Police Pension Municipal Compliance Report and 2017 Tax Levy Request. 2016 Fire Pension Municipal Compliance Report and 2017 Tax Levy Request. Approvals, September 22nd, 2017, payroll in the amount of $839,794.36. Accounts payable, $2,181,790.74. Ordinance 17-60 Surplus Vehicle Request. Resolution 17-105-R, accepting grant easement from Batavia Park District for Area III Stormwater Sewer Separation Project at Quarry Beach. Resolution 17-108-R, accepting grant of easement from Suncast for the Suncast Building Expansion Project. Resolution 17-109-R, authorizing a reduction in the letter of credit for Suncast Building Expansion Project. And lastly, the Class F liquor license for Water Street Studios' Project Fusion, the big reveal. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any discussions? Clerk call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Your.
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number six, Matters from the Public for Items Not on the Agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is Resolution 17-106-R, authorizing execution of contract with ALAM Construction for Area III Storm Sewers Separation in the amount of $165,981.20. Alderman O'Brien, do you have?
Wolf?
Actually going to be Marty.
Alderman Callahan. This is the Area III Stormwater Sewer Separation, the Outflow Project, which was bid out on September 12th. This is related to a lot of the storm and wastewater sewage, storm separation that is going on, and resulting from the original June of 2015 flooding. The improvements include separating the storm sewer from the sanitary sewer, starting downstream, which is from the Fox River to the West Side Cemetery. There were a good number of bids on this. There were eight total, and seven of them came under the engineer's estimate, which was really good. And the lowest one was ALAM Concrete Contractors in the amount of $150,892, and with a 10% contingency fee, comes out to $165,981.20, and the engineer's estimate was $237,383. So, that's significant.
Significant. So, are you making a motion?
So, if anybody has any questions, I will move that we approve Resolution 17-106-R, authorizing execution of the contract with ALAM Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Area III Storm Sewer Separation Outflow.
Second. Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Er, for the approval of Resolution 17-106-R. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number eight, which is a policy directive on public comment for items that are on the agenda, a five-minute time limit. And who's got this one?
I had it during the council meeting, or the council meeting. During the council meeting, we had a discussion as to if we should limit the amount of time that members of the audience can address a topic for an item that is on the agenda. And we talked about whether it should be three minutes or five minutes, and we asked for the city attorney who is here for some input. We all had different ideas about it, and by a vote of nine to two, we directed staff to create a policy that would set a time limit of five minutes for public approve, or public comment on items that were, that there were quite a few people that wanted to speak. However, we could waive that time limit at any time, and we could say it could be longer, or it could, but the minimum would be five minutes.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, we have the ability, but in extreme circumstances, we do still have the ability to go three minutes, or, I mean, this just codifies it, right?
You know, I'm not going to advocate for this at this moment, but just something for all of you to think about. I've talked to some other mayors in the area about what they do, and this is a pretty common thing. And so, one idea that I've heard has come up, and I haven't been able to go see it, but I guess it exists in a couple of places, is that they've put a time clock in the city council room, someplace hanging in the ceiling, and when somebody comes up and says, "Okay, you've got five minutes," the clerk hits the button and the clock starts. And at the end of the five minutes, there's some bell or motion or something. What would be your thoughts about that? You know, I mean, at least everybody would know how much time they have left, because everybody's getting the same amount of time, you know, because you say, whoever's running a meeting, you say, "Well, you got three minutes." Well, Alderman Salvati has become kind of our informal timekeeper here, and so, which is good, we appreciate you doing it, but, I mean, I think it kind of puts you in, somebody will say, "Oh, he didn't give me my full time," or, you know, I can just hear some of it.
Or worse.
What? So, just think about it. We don't need to discuss it tonight, but I just want you to think that that's an idea that's out there, and, I mean, there's a lot of little clocks in a lot of places you go these days, in every high school gym, and a lot of other places, they're out there. So, it's, it's common, you can get them. So, Alderman Brown?
Couple comments I've got on this one. I wasn't here at the last meeting for the discussion, unfortunately, but I just, you know, I'm going to support this, and I think it's a good idea. However, it's unfortunate that I think that we need to have it, because I think, you know, the reason why we think we need to have it is because some people just don't want to pay attention when we say, "Hey, we've got a whole room full of people here, and we need to allow everybody to have ample opportunity to talk." And then we need to have our opportunity to talk as a council or as a committee, and some people just don't want to listen to that. So, I think that's the reason behind this policy taking place. I would think that the timer clock would be a good idea. You need something to go by. However, I would expect to be able to be flexible with this as Chair of the Committee of the Whole. You know, if we've got something that, the whole thing around this Campana building is why all this thing came up, but if we've got another issue, say what's on the Committee of the Whole tomorrow night, and we might only have a couple residents that are there that are very concerned, but yet, and that's maybe the only thing really important on the agenda, we should be able to afford them some more time to talk if they feel they need it, or if we feel we need to listen to what they have to say. And so, as Chairman of the Committee of the Whole, I'm not going to hold this counter as gospel. You know, when it hits five minutes, unless we've got a whole room full of people, I'm going to say, pay no attention to the counter, please keep talking. But I do think we need it, because I do think we need to have a policy in place where, where we can enact it without people saying, "Well, now you're just coming up with this rule here, so why are you picking on us?" So, I'll support it.
Yeah, I mean, the counter, as I was explaining to me, was a couple cities that have tried to say that it presents a strong evidence of fairness and public accountability, and everybody sees what the times are and what's going on, and you're not, nobody's saying, "Well, you let this guy talk, and I didn't get my full five minutes," you know. This is right there, hanging in the ceiling, showing them where they're at, and everybody in the room knows where they're at.
Sure.
Alderman O'Brien?
I'm not going to support this. I, we, since I've been on the council, we've let people speak, and it hasn't been a burden. I mean, I know some recent issues have come up that really have been popular or unpopular, however people want to view it, but I just think, you know, we can probably let people, we can insert the five-minute rule when there's a contentious meeting with, is a lot, many people are attending it and want to speak out and have their voices heard, but for the majority of our meetings, we don't have that. And so, and as far as the clock is concerned, I would have to oppose that also. I just think that would be a distraction to the council and to the people. I mean, it's, it's difficult enough for people to come up to the podium and speak before us, and now they got a clock that they're paying attention to, and they're trying to organize their thoughts. So, that's something I would also be opposed to, so I'm not going to support this.
Alderman Atack?
I tend to lean in the same direction that Mike does, though I may be in favor of limiting the hour that we go beyond in the evening. So, I wasn't here last Tuesday, but I heard it was a midnight meeting, and I think that that's kind of...
That's funny.
All right. I think that's kind of late for everyone. So, maybe 10:30, and everyone knows that the meeting is at 10:30, and there's a room full of people, and we need to give everyone an opportunity to speak. So, I guess that would help maybe them self-monitor a little bit.
Alderman Stark?
Well, the purpose of this is not so that at every single meeting, every single person is only limited to speaking five minutes. The purpose was to codify it so that it is on the books as this is a policy, and we have the ability to deviate from it. So, it's not like a hard and fast rule, but if we need to enforce it, it's there, and we can point to it and say, "It's here." The other thing is if it is a contentious item, most of us had already seen hours and hours of video of the same people testifying about their opinions about the most recent project, and then they came up and talked about it again to city council. So, it was kind of easier to get the highlight reel if we were limiting the amount of time. And so, that was one of the reasons that it came up just prior to our most recent meetings, was so that, you know, more people could speak, because we started, you know, when you do the math, if people each talk for 10 or 15 minutes, you don't get many people's opinions in the time that we allot for public comment. So, that was the primary impetus between putting out a time limit. I, of course, was in favor of three minutes, which was soundly defeated, but I just also think it gives people, you know, if you know that it's a contentious meeting, which people normally do, they can organize their thoughts, they can write them down, and then they can come up and speak about them rather than, you know, speak more off the cuff, so.
Alderman Salvati? Saron?
No, I'll agree with Susan, and just say I will support both the five-minute and the clock, with the understanding that this is just codifying it, that I think we have consensus that we value people's speaking, and if we have time, to give them as much time as they need. I think we're all in agreement on that, so I would support these, knowing that it's just codifying it in case we need it. I've been here five years, I think we've put a time limit on less than a handful of times, and would favor going in that direction still.
Alderman Er?
I was initially in favor of it, but just I keep on thinking about it, it just sounds, it turns very arbitrary. And if we had some way, some way to determine, like signing people up in advance, hey, based on, hey, 20 people decided to talk, okay, well, you know, five minutes, five minutes is 100 minutes. I mean, that's, that's quite a bit. But then if three people sign up, can you say 10? Either way, we're just making it very arbitrary that we can do it, or we don't have to. We're just saying, eh, five minutes, but maybe we will, maybe we won't. So, it just feels like, why are we saying it at all if it's not going to be for every single meeting is five minutes, so.
Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I find it interesting that prior to January of 2011, it wasn't codified in, under state law, that the public had the right to speak. That has now changed, and all of these new rules, I would suggest that everybody kind of look at this, there's a couple really good articles. The CitizensAdvocacyCenter.org put out, hey, may I address the public, what your rights are for speaking at a public hearing? Or Ansel Glank has put out some really good in their municipal attorneys. What, what this is actually doing is completely the opposite of what you're thinking. It is making it not arbitrary. You are setting up the guidelines and the expectations, but you always have the ability to do what Dave said, is we want more time on this. We can grant more time, but you're setting the ground rules so that you're protecting everyone's right to have equal opportunities to speak. It takes away the arbitrary nature of what's going on. So, by codifying it and saying, "We do five minutes, but we can yield more testimony if we want to," that is perfectly legal. That has, that has the support of all free speech organizations that are out there. There's also the point of, I know Susan brought it up, if somebody wants to talk, we do have a few things that we could actually clear up. If somebody wants to speak at a meeting and say the same exact thing, or at that meeting, two people want to repeat each other, by law, they have to. They can repeat, and they can say it over and over. Dave?
For clarification, and I don't know if Marty, if you can answer this, or if we need to go to legal, because you just mentioned that in January 2011, that by law, the residents, the public has the right to speak, but then you said at a public hearing.
No, no.
Was that only at a public hearing, or a public meeting?
Sorry, it was public meetings. Any public meeting. It wasn't...
So, any public meeting, they can get up and speak, because for years, we kind of ran the committees as, as this is our time, and the residents, the public had their time at the public hearings in front of Plan Commission and what have you, and then they could also have their time at city council at those public hearings. But the committee time was run as, this is the only time that we as the committee can sit here together because of the Open Meetings Act and discuss things, so please allow us to have our time, is what we would explain to the, to the residents. And they understood that, and there was never really an issue with that. It's just recently, I'd say within the six or seven last years, that we started saying, "Hey, anybody that wants to have something to say, come on up, no matter what meeting it is." And I'm not saying that that's wrong, but I would really just like some clarification, because to be honest with you, before the last Committee of the Whole meeting, or maybe it was the one before, Scott and Laura and I were on the phone talking about what we were going to do at the next, at the first Committee of the Whole meeting, I think it was, where the last major project, which is Campana, got brought up, because, you know, we, as Susan said, we already had two public hearings. The residents already had a lot of time, there was nine hours with the testimony given, and we all had video to look at, we all had minutes to look at, and if they were going to get up and just repeat themselves, then maybe we ought to just say, "Hey, we've heard what you've had to say, this is our time." But then it was decided to let everybody have their say. So, I, I would like some clarification. You know, is it just public hearings, or is it all public meetings, that they're, that they can do that, that we can't say they can't?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, you're raising some really great points, because what you're saying is, you know, the six or seven years, well, that's kind of since the law's been in effect, and we've been generally doing it correct. You're to offer public comment, which is our Matters from the Public, on our meetings, that can be at the beginning or the end of the meeting, where you can speak about anything. But then you also have to, during the topics, the items on the agenda, you have to allow public comment, and that's what, we've always done that too, since I've been on. We just are, I think, buttoning up a little bit more on the language of, we're not saying that, that it's freewheeling where everybody can talk for hours and hours on end. It does talk about in the law that you have the ability to set reasonable expectations, which are, you can set time limits so long as you put them out there and say what it is, but then still not waive your right to have the ability to say, for this meeting, we only have two people, so you can talk for however long we're wanting to, to have those discussions. It doesn't limit that, because you're still giving the public more opportunity to speak, and that's always going to be viewed favorably. If you're on a, on a situation where you don't want to hear something, and you say, "One minute, and we're only talking to two people," you can't do that anymore. So, I would say if you can get some of that information out there, some of the most, 95% of what we do is absolutely perfect. There's a couple small little tweaks that I think that we could make to make it even stronger, so that we are protecting the citizens' First Amendment.
I would like some clarification from legal on that, Your Honor, if we could, because I just don't want to, we shouldn't, Scott and I and Laura shouldn't be having the conversation about, are we going to allow public to speak?
Yep.
If we can't have that, I mean, if we don't have that opportunity.
Totally agree.
Yeah, Alderman Callahan is right. The law was changed back in 2011 to allow anybody to speak at any public meeting, to have the opportunity under the rules established by the, by the body. So, if you guys were to pass rules limiting speech to five minutes, or whatever rules songs are reasonable, and they fall within those rules, that person has the right to speak at that public meeting.
Public meeting, that public hearing?
Public meeting, correct, yes.
And at a public hearing, would we be able to limit them or not?
Yes.
We are able to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, we have a motion in second for the approval of the, we don't have it?
No, not yet.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the policy as amended. Say it.
Motion in second for the approval of the policy as amended.
Can I get clarification? What was the amendment? Oh, I was thinking from the two minutes to the five minutes. That was originally approved, so.
That was what we were doing here as much as...
Right. Right, that's in the... Okay.
Oh, it's written.
Any other further discussion on going from two minutes to five minutes?
Having run the last interesting meeting, I guess I'd like to chime in that I think that there are times, like we started at five minutes after 10, and we decided that we were going to go with three minutes, because we had, I think, 15 or 17 people that were already signed up. Had we not done that, we would have been there till the next day. So, I think that there are times when that definitely might get changed, but I think it's a good baseline to have that there, so people that come in have the expectation, and maybe if we decide at some point that we only want to go till 11 o'clock, then we only put X number of minutes and X number of spots on that signup sheet, and those are the people that can speak that night. And if that means three people have to get together and have one person be the spokesman, they can do that.
Alderman Salvati?
Just real quick, I think it helps us to, to have some definite time limits, and I think, you know, you were, you were correct in that if it's an hour, or whatever that is, whatever that cap is, that way everyone knows we're on the same page, we as a council can be tuned in, you know, we know that there's going to be a finite spot where we are either going to finish or going to continue, and, and once everybody's on that page, we can, we can move forward.
Okay.
I just want to, Marty, thank you for your explanation, that helped in my mind, so.
I'll send out...
No further discussion. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Your?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
No.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
So, that is 11 yes, two no's, and one absent. So, the motion's approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was not at last Tuesday's meeting, but I did want to bring up, before I forget about it, that it's very helpful if everyone speaks clearly into the microphone, because watching it on BATV, I could only hear about 75% of what was being said, because people either speak too far away from the microphone, or don't talk into a microphone at all, and just hope that their voice carries enough. So, just as a reminder to everyone on staff and on the council, and people speaking in the public, you really, really have to speak into the microphone, or it doesn't pick it up at all.
Unless you're sitting in the middle of the back row.
What's that, Alan?
Unless you're sitting in the middle of the row in the back and scream something out during the meeting.
Yeah.
Which is another discussion that we have.
I'm glad you brought that up, Nick, because really, the only people that can be heard is if you're sitting as close as what Susan is right now, or I am right now. Alan, you're the first one to say, "BATV can't hear you," but you're the first one to sit back like this, talk to them. So, I mean, we're all guilty of it, but we all have to try to pay more, more attention to it.
The problem is, is we can hear each other here, but nobody can hear us on the broadcast.
We need to be more conscious of how close we are to the mic, yeah.
Okay, moving to item number nine on our agenda, which is a report from the Chamber of Commerce. Holly, Dick?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this evening. I want to just make a general comment about how nice it was to hear about a cement contract coming in under the contractor's budget, so thank you for that. So, we have several events coming up through the chamber. We have one tomorrow morning. The chamber and the Batavia Rotary Club are teaming up to serve beer on Saturday night at Oktoberfest. So bring lots of tip money from 6:00 until 10:00 p.m. Then on the 10th, we have our Women in Business Luncheon. Our keynote speaker is Laura Newman, our city administrator. That is at 11:30 a.m. at Mill Creek. We have several people from city staff that are already attending, and would encourage all of you to attend as well. On the 12th, we have our Fall Into Business Progressive Luncheon. That's at Villa Olivia. Excuse me. We are partnering with five other chambers on that one, and is at 11 a.m. On the 18th, we have the Illinois Democratic gubernatorial candidates forum. We're partnering with the Daily Herald, and that will be presented in Mount Prospect at 10:30 a.m. Then on the 18th, we have our monthly free and open networking event called Networking It, and that will be at Crosstown Pub from 5:00 until 7:00 p.m. And then on the 24th, we have our Authors Breakfast with Roger Brysh, who will be presenting on Questions That Matter. And that's at 7:30 a.m. at the Lincoln Inn. There's a lot of other things in between those events, so please check the chamber calendar on our website at bataviacamber.org. So some of you have free pet food in front of you that was brought to you today by Nick Saltwich of Bentley's Pet Stuff. And he is the general manager at the location here in Batavia, and he is going to come up here and talk to you a little bit about what they have to offer. Nick?
Thank you, Holly. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. As Holly said, my name is Nick Saltwich. I'm the manager of Bentley's Pet Stuff right here in Batavia. Our address is 1934 West Fabian Parkway, right next to Trader Joe's. Our phone number is 630-425-3454. We have convenience shopping hours, and we open seven days a week. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Our website is petstuff.com. We also have a Facebook, that is Bentley's Pet Stuff Batavia. The owners of Bentley, Lisa and Giovanni Sanafe, founded this company nine years ago after losing their cat to food-related illness. Lisa began taking a closer look at ingredients in the pet food, and was shocked. The ingredients were filled with chemicals, byproducts, and some not-so-good stuff. Lisa knew she had to do something. She wanted to get the word out there of the great options available, and to make, in form, uh, excuse me, and to make, for, for pet parents to, to make decisions on their pets' health through their food. Here at Bentley's, we diligently research all of our food, so we, so we can be assured that no matter what you choose, it is healthy for your pet. All of our food and treats are free of byproducts, corn, wheat, and soy. My staff and I have gone through extensive training to help pet parents find the best products for their pets' needs. We strive to have every pet and the owner leave the store happy and healthy. We believe in pets, people, and the planet we share. Company-wide, we work closely with rescues and donate in excess of 1,000 pounds a month to local shelters. We also donated over 20,000 pounds plus to flood victims of Texas. We partner with many local rescues and host events. My location in Batavia hosts pet adoptions in-house. We try to do twice a month. Our goal is to help pets find their forever homes. Lisa chose Batavia because of its great location and the wonderful community whom have welcomed us with open arms. We proudly opened our doors December 9th, 2016. In the, in the short nine, 10-month, we've been open, we've seen a great response from the people of Batavia. We are happy to have so many new and regular customers on a daily basis. The positive response to our store and the mission has been wonderful, and we look forward to many more years in Batavia. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to our community and taking such a nice position, and appreciate your good efforts you're doing. I, I've already heard from several residents about how pleased they are that you're there, and have been able to patronize you. So you apparently are building a business constituency.
Trying to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the administrator's report.
And the administrator and her dogs are big fans of Bentley's as well. So that's, the food is exactly the food we feed our dogs, and they love it. So tonight, I'd like to tell you about a few things that are going on in Public Works. We hit a bit of a roadblock with our city hall window installations, in that the installed window that we have back here in the alderman's room still showed minor leakage under vacuum. And so Anderson Windows is looking into this issue for us. But the project schedule is pending what resolution they might find to that. It depends on whether we might have to delay the first phase of our work until next year in order to be able to make sure that those are going to be sound. And that would mean that next year, then, we would do both the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 parts of the project. Also, the final phase of the Public Works air improvement project is scheduled to be completed, and the attic installation above the second-floor offices. So that should be completed this week. And the sanitary sewer lining project is in the permitting process with Illinois Department of Transportation. It's scheduled to commence the week of October 9th. Staff met with RJN consultants to discuss the 2018 sanitary sewer INI reduction and flow monitoring programs. You might notice that while we had said that the bridge flowers, the Wilson Street flowers were going to be replaced with fall mums, the extension of our warm weather this year has allowed us to keep the beautiful pink petunias in place for a little bit longer. But now the time has come where we will begin that replacement process. And I think you see on River Street already, the mums are in place, and beautiful maroon and gold colors to celebrate our coming, homecoming weekend. They look really nice. The roadway crack fill project is coming to a close, and the wastewater treatment facility construction process is, is on schedule. And we'll present our next monthly update in the month of October. The joint electric project that we had going on with the Park District is almost complete. Only a few receptacles and some miscellaneous wiring remain to be completed on that project. And then finally, staff met with a vendor for the electrical charging stations in the parking lot, and will bring a recommendation to City Council in October for those charging stations. And the plan is that the patrons of those stations would pay for the electricity as they consumed it at the, at the charging station itself. So they do that by putting their card into the charging station. Also want to update you on a couple of matters with the police department. New Batavia Police Officer Nick Burdette just graduated from basic training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy last Friday, and he'll be returning to the department this week to begin his field training process. And on Monday, September 25th, our Board of Fire and Police Commissioners made an offer to hire our newest member of the police department, William Konofsky. Officer Konofsky is currently serving as a police officer in Normal, Illinois, but he's originally from the Fox Valley area. And so he looks forward to returning here. And he'll begin his employment with us on October 9th. And since he's already a certified police officer in the state of Illinois, then he can begin his field training process immediately. It's always very good when we are able to hire a certified officer, because we can have them in full service much sooner than a new cadet who has to go through that training process. I also wanted to let everyone know that I received a wonderful thank you note from the Batavia Depot Museum. The Public Works Department assisted them with creating the sign that has been placed outside of the depot, letting everyone know that they have a capital, a capital campaign going on right now for their expansion. So they say thank you very much to the city of Batavia for assisting them with that project. I also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the lovely award that was presented, presented to us at the Harvest Festival a couple of weeks ago. And they honored us at that dinner that night for having 62 years of membership in the Chamber of Commerce. We have a tremendously successful and long-serving Chamber of Commerce here in the city of Batavia, something we can be very proud of. All of the businesses who were there spoke so highly of the services that are provided by the Chamber of Commerce, and also for the incredible opportunities that it presents to network not only with the business community, but give it prominence in, in our community, so that our residents know about all of the fabulous businesses that we have located here, right here in the city of Batavia. And I know that because of the promotions that the chamber does, I myself have become aware of businesses that I could select, that are Batavia businesses, for the services and the goods that they provide. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So last week, I was telling you that we were going to be meeting with Shodin, and we met with them last Tuesday afternoon for about two and a half hours, and then internally, we held a discussion amongst ourselves on Thursday. And where we're at right now is we are waiting for the revised pro forma numbers to come back from the developer. Because while we have an understanding of the design changes that they would suggest in order to reduce the construction costs, we still feel that it's essential in order for staff to make any type of recommendation about whether City Council should consider those design changes, it's important for us to see what the numbers truly are in order to be able to evaluate the different options. So the question being, I, I think when we last brought this to City Council, it was, we were planning to bring this on October 10th. But since then, we had our first Campana meeting, and decided that October 10th would be the next meeting where Campana would be discussed. So I wanted to ask all of you if you feel comfortable holding both of those discussions on the same date, or if you would like to wait until October 17th to have the discussion about One Washington Place, or if you would like to schedule a special meeting to discuss that, what the, what your preference would be.
When with the special meeting? What do you, do you have a date in mind for the special meeting?
I was thinking perhaps October 11th. I was at first thinking October 9th, but then I realized that it's Columbus Day, and people may have other plans for Columbus Day, because I do think that it's a holiday for the public school.
I think we need to move along on One North Washington. I think we need to move along on One North Washington.
Are we anticipating that would be a committee of the whole meeting?
Yes.
Because looking at my calendar, I'm going to be at the Pace Bus Board meeting for the early part of that evening, so I wouldn't be here probably to start it, so. My able mayor pro tem, I'm sure, would be more than.
I think we should move along. I think we should have a meeting on October 11th, Wednesday. We, we kind of put the hammer down on staff to get with Shodin, because we wanted this resolved within 30 days. We gave him the October 10th meeting date to do that. So I don't think we ought to push it off a week. I think pushing it off a day is too far, but we shouldn't have them both on the same night. So I think we should do it on October 11th.
How's everybody else with that?
Good.
Good.
Okay. I also wanted to ask if you were planning to have a committee of the whole meeting on October 31st, being Halloween night. We don't currently have anything that's on the agenda that night. However, because of things like One Washington Place and Campana, there are other items that we could discuss that evening if necessary. And we could wait until we get closer to that meeting to determine whether or not we should keep that on the calendar or not. We could decide at our October 24th meeting, or October 17th meeting. But I wanted to bring it up as soon as possible.
I'd suggest that we don't have it on that evening, and if we have something, we may have it on that Wednesday after, you know, October 1st, I mean, November 1st.
November 1st?
I was just going to say, I haven't been here for 37 years. I think we tried that one time.
Yep.
And it was not well-received.
Well, I thank you to Jenny Smith for bringing it up, then. The fourth bridge sculpture fractal by Bruce White is expected to be installed tomorrow. So looking forward to that. And then I also just wanted to let the public know about the leaf and brush collection dates. Leaves on the east side will be picked up the weeks of October 16th and the week of October 30th. And then on the west side, the leaf pickup is October 23rd and November 6th. And we don't have a third leaf pickup unless there's some weather event that interrupts our ability to pick up on the first two dates. You can put your leaves into the, the bags for collection by the refuse company, and they don't need a sticker if it's in the month of December. And as far as brush pickup goes, we have a couple of more dates for that. East side is October 9th, and west side is October 16th. And then we'll have citywide, one last collection for brush on November 27th. That will be the last brush pickup date of the year. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
You know, one other community tidbit I think I'd like to have us talk about just for a second, is last year, police department and myself took quite a bit of grief and consternation from residents about the fact that we were allowing Wilson Street to be shut down at 4:45 in the afternoon to host the Batavia High School homecoming parade. And one woman who was quite irate with me on the phone said, at least you could do is publicize it ahead of time that it's going to be held. So this year, it's going to be this coming Wednesday, at, the chief tells me this afternoon about 4:45, it's going to start on North River Street. Go right out Wilson to Batavia High School is the route. And we have already put it on the city website, so if anybody looks there. But more interestingly, Chief Deike was nice enough to put it on both the east and west side fire station electric signs. So that's out there. And so if the press is looking for a little story to write sometime today or tomorrow, maybe you could throw something in the paper, too.
We'd appreciate it.
Because for some reason, some people say they really get, when you pull that off at rush hour in downtown Batavia, you really cause some consternation and backups, and we're not here to do that, as much as it's a once, once-a-year deal, and it's no big thing, in my opinion, but people do get upset about it.
I, glad you brought that up. I had several comments today, including one from my wife, that the email or text messages that was sent out on the city list only says that the Wilson Street Bridge is closed. It doesn't say what day, or what time, or anything else. So we need to update that, find out from Chris, and then have that done again, maybe tomorrow.
Sounds good.
And on Wednesday, but with a date and a time.
What?
Yeah. And why, maybe? That'd be good.
Well, the chief told me this afternoon, he thinks that once the parade starts, it moves pretty quick. And so he's optimistic he will get it out of here in about 20 minutes. It won't be that long, but I guess that just does cause enough of a backup that we irate citizen constituency shows up.
Get out and march in the parade.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, just want to get that word out there that we're doing that on.
Sure.
Wednesday. Anybody else for this, any administrators? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Couple meetings to announce, Your Honor. Tomorrow night's committee of the whole meeting. We have, as far as CDC, we have initial land use proposal for the Fox Valley Sports Entertainment Center, which has been canceled, that is no longer on the agenda for tomorrow evening. But we do have ordinance 1761 and Resolution 17110R, and those are both for the property on West Wilson Street, where the old water tower used to be. It's a proposed development with six single-family homes that are being proposed for that property. And that's all we have for CDC that evening. Plan Commission for this coming Wednesday has been canceled. Historic preservation is scheduled for Monday, October 9th at 5:30. And the next Plan Commission is scheduled for October 11th at 7:00. Nope, I'm sorry, I've got that wrong. Next Plan Commission is scheduled for October 18th at 7:00. And our CDC meeting is scheduled for 7:30 on Tuesday, October 10th. So I have. And then we've got the special CDC meeting that we just set up, our October 11th for One Washington. Awesome.
Government Services, Alderman Atak?
So far, we have the disposition of the Tomley Building on the agenda for this month, and that will be discussed tomorrow night. and that will be discussed tomorrow night. And I'm wondering what time the Bicycle Commission meeting is on October 9th, and the Environmental Commission meeting is on October 11th. Do we have a time for those meetings? Okay.
Bicycle Commission meeting is canceled.
Okay, so we just have the Environmental Commission meeting this week?
I want to say they generally meet about seven, don't they?
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. City services, Alderman Wolf?
I believe the only thing we have is the maintenance contract for Braeburn Marsh on tomorrow night. It's the only thing I know of. And just another word about the brush pickup and leaf pickup, make sure that your leaves do not end up out in the street, keep them up on the parkway, and make sure that the drains stay open, so if it ever does rain, it actually can go somewhere. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
We have nothing coming up in the next few weeks, Your Honor.
Okay. All right.
Clarification, did you say the Bicycle Commission has been canceled? Because it's still listed on the website for, I'm sorry, the last one on the website was September 11th, I'm sorry. September 11th, 2017. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any other business? Alderman Kellyanne?
I just want to extend an invitation out to the council that the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center is having their annual Elevate Awards on Friday, October 20th, 2017, at the St. Charles Country Club. If you're unfamiliar with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center, the Elevate Awards, they were created with the vision to showcase individuals and businesses in the Fox Valley that have made great strides in their business and are making difference, differences in their communities, and the, kind of, some of the categories are Entrepreneur of the Year, Community Business of the Year, Innovator of the Year. And if you would like to get tickets, they are at F V E C dot org.
Alderman Shanson?
Very briefly, I do appreciate the moment of silence that we observed tonight. I appreciate the solace that it gives us and the camaraderie it gives us to come together. But there have been almost 600 killings since 1999 of mass proportions. It is pretty clear that prayers and moments of silence are not making a difference. If the fourteen of us do want to do something, I would ask that you bring us a resolution that we can give to our congressman to tell them to enact some sort of meaningful reforms and to address the healthcare, the mental healthcare crisis in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would support that.
I would support that also.
Now, I would tell you that I think the chief would join with me. We are battling in Batavia a mental health crisis moment by moment here, and the condition of the state of Illinois certainly has not done us any favor, because I think their answer to some issues is to just open the door and let a whole bunch of people out, send them out here to let us deal with them. And I mean, it's a very problematic challenge for not only Batavia but all cities, so it's an issue that, I don't know, Chief Yule and I, we can talk about this a little bit and see what we can, may want to suggest, the things we'd like to have the council get behind and support here, so we'll get back to you with something.
Thank you.
Okay. Going to the mayor's report, I've got a couple of things I just would like to make some comments about. First of all, as most of you know, not last week, but the week before, we lost a very prominent Batavian by the name of Rosalie Jones, who had been president of the Batavia School Board for a number of years. And Rosalie had been, I will describe her as a real mover and shaker, kind of a behind-the-scenes type person. But several things I would cite happened during her tenures on the school board. One was, is that she brought a new emphasis into enhancing the curriculum of all the Batavia school kids, and she fought very hard and won the battle to implement the idea of bringing a full-time curriculum director into the school district to coordinate the curriculum between all the schools and all the different levels. And certainly, one of the things I remember her having a pretty vocal role in was we had to pull off the infamous deal where we had the Batavia Bethany Lutheran Church wanting to buy the old McQuain School, which they did. And then the Batavia School District took the money that they got from buying the Bethany School, and they went across the street and bought the old library, which they then turned into their administration building and quite appropriately named it the Rosalie Jones Center. And then they took a bigger pot of money than they had originally and went down the street and bought the old high school building to build the new library. So, that was one of those domino things that, and I will tell you, having been in the middle of that thing from the starting to the beginning, that whole thing was no easy deal to do. I mean, there was private investors that wanted to buy those buildings, there was some people that didn't want us to spend any taxpayer money on it, and the city, I just sat there as kind of a, at one in the meetings and as a cheerleader for the whole idea to kind of unfold, and we stopped and we started a couple of times, but Rosalie just wouldn't let it go. She grabbed a hold of that one and just moved it right along as far as the school district's role in it was. So, she was a person that really did, at the end of the day, make a very positive difference in our community. I mean, some really significant things were accomplished that she had a vital role in, so I just wanted to make mention of that. Also, this past week, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce invites me to do a number of ribbon cuttings these days, and we had a unique one the other day at Rio Pro Video, where Dick Lavoy, who started that company many years ago, has some health issues and has made the decision he wanted to retire. So, they had a ribbon cutting where we turned the business over from Dick to his son Brian officially, and the Chamber did a really nice job with it, I felt. But I just wanted to pay a couple of words of tribute to Dick Lavoy, because Dick has been stalwart Batavia businessman. I was chatting with him the other day, and he started business with his beverage store over next to the Jewel in 1962, when they opened the shopping center up and the first Jewel store was moving in next door. And at that time, the Jewel didn't sell liquor, so he had a pretty good business there where people would go to the grocery store and then go right around the corner to his place. But he stayed there for a number of years, and now he's been in the, at Rio Pro here for several decades. So, at the end of the day, when Dick retired officially last week, he had fifty-six years of Wilson Street business to his credit. And he said the only one that was on the street that had been there before him and was still there today is Olmstead's TV and Appliance. But he was second runner-up at the time that he retired for being a business face in the Batavia community, and I would note that he's always been a class act and a first-class guy and was always there to kind of do what needed to be done to support the downtown. And his new business of copying all these slides and movie film and photographs and making these family tapes has really become quite a beloved opportunity for a whole bunch of people to bring in all their old family pictures and let he and his son put those together in some type of a form. I know it's become an extremely popular Christmas gift for people to do that and give Grandma and Grandpa or whomever copies of the DVD that they make. So, he was kind of a pioneer in that field, too, so I just wanted to pay a word of thanks to Dick Lavoy for being such a prominent and positive force in the Batavia community for so many years. Also, I wanted to make mention, and Alderman Brown beat me to it, that tomorrow night we are going to have item number eight, which is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with, for Braeburn Marsh for five-year management and maintenance with V3 in the amount not to exceed $146,000. I want to encourage our support of that, because I will tell you, I worry about the Braeburn Marsh out there, because, you know, it was a great idea when it was first put into place, but it's, Mother Nature's that grabbed hold of it and allows it to grow and grow and grow, and at the end of this year, and every year, end of the fall season, all that stuff that's growing out there just dies and falls over, and that becomes the new carpet for which the new crop grows up next year. And if you don't burn that thing off every couple of years at the minimum, you're going to have a, Chief Dyke and his men and women are going to have some really exciting time out there some night, because that thing is just one huge pile of combustible material if it's allowed to lay there year after year after year. So, you know, it was a great idea, I'm glad we did it, but it needs to be maintained, and you cannot allow something like that to just lay there for years after years after years and not have some matches put to it and burned it off under controlled atmosphere when the winds aren't blowing and nobody's house is going to be in danger. But having, as all of you know, I've have some fire department years in my background, and I've been in situations involving things like that, and they are no fun, because specifically, you go out into that marsh there, you don't know how strong the ground is that you're standing on with the fire hose. And we used to have some problems similar to this out at Nelson's Lake, and I can remember one night when our Batavia fireman went down to his shoulders in muck out there, and we had to put ropes around him and everything else to pull him out of the thing. So, these are no easy thing to deal with, and just for the sake, safety of our own fire department and any of those from around us that would come in to help us, we need to avoid that at all costs. So, we really need to have a maintenance contract on that marsh to get that thing well-controlled and underway at all times. The final thing I want to tell you is, is that the end of this week, we're going to have a lot of visitors in Batavia. Batavia High School with the homecoming is going to have, I think it's four graduating classes, the Batavia High School are going to have class reunions this coming weekend. And the class of 57 had one two weeks ago, but they're telling me that a bunch of them are coming back for the end of this week to observe the things that are going to happen because they'd like to be part of it. So, the class of 62 and the class of 67, of which I'm a member of, and the class of 87 is also, I'm told, is coming in. So, there's going to be a lot of people around, so we have put together, there's a group of us have been working on this, we've put together a thing called the Batavia From Whence You Came, because most of these people have been gone here fifty years. And we are just totally overwhelmed by the number of people from way far away, California, Florida, Washington, Mexico, Arizona, Australia, are all saying they're coming to this thing and have sent real money to say that they really are intending to come. And so, my reunion at the class of 67, we've got eighty-three people signed up, and there's, twenty-four of us are dead already, but we still got eighty-three that want to come to the reunion. So, we're going to do this thing called Batavia From Whence You Came, and on Thursday morning, we're going to have an entourage that's going to gather here, and then we're going out and we're going to go to the old memorial field, athletic field on Illinois Avenue, which is the athletic field that all this group played on. Then from there, they're going to go to the quarry, and the park district's opening it up so everybody can go in and walk through the sand of that, because everybody in this group, that was where everybody went, was to the quarry. Then they're going to leave there, and they're going to go over to Blaine Street School, and Mike's Blaine and the owner have been gracious enough to say they're going to let us go in and look at that. It's nicely done. Then they're going to walk over to Bellevue, because a couple of the people in the classes are the sons of the gentleman who was the last sanitarium at Bellevue. They're coming to this reunion. And then we're going to go down and walk around the outside of the current library, which is where the high school building stood that everybody in this group went to high school at. And then on Friday, Fermilab is letting us come out to the lab and go up on the sixteenth floor and to see Batavia from positions of which most of them have never seen it before. Then we're going to come back down, and we're going to start at, across the street from the Speedway Gas Station out at Kirk and Wilson, and back in the trees that's south of Wilson Street there, there's a house that for many years has been the director's home of, whoever the director of Fermilab is. And in 1989, that was the home of Dr. Leon Letterman when he won the Nobel Prize. So, we will note that, and then we drive down and we go to Dazzle's Auto Garage at Wilson and Redant, and that's where in 1973, Twentieth Century Fox came to town and made scenes in the movie Harry and Tono, starring Art Carney, of which Art Carney won the Academy Award for Best Actor. So, we got the Academy Award at Redant and Wilson, and then you go one block further to the 700 block, 713, and we have the house where Jackie D. Shannon, who wrote Put A Little Love In Your Heart and What The World Needs Now Is Love, and who won the Grammy Award in '83 for those songs, that's where she grew up. So, on, within a six-block stretch of East Wilson Street, we got the Nobel Prize, the Academy Award, and the Grammy Award. And then we're going to go to the old East Side Center or the Park District, and that, there's many in this group that went to school in that building when it was first built at the back of the Catholic church to be the Catholic school for the sixth, I think it was, seventh and eighth grade. And then I think a highlight was going to be Sir L. Matters agreed to open up Old Louise White School, because many of them did go there. Everybody, I think, in the room probably played basketball in the gym there at some time, so when they see what he has done in there, that'll be, I think, in. So, that's what we're doing on Thursday and Friday, and then they're coming to all the Oktoberfest and everything else. So, among those who are coming is my classmate Ken Anderson, who was the starting quarterback in the 1982 Super Bowl. So, Ken and I have talked on the phone several times in the last few weeks, and he has agreed to come with me on Friday night to the Oktoberfest, and as long as they'll let us do it at 5:30, they always ask the mayor to break open the first keg, so I'm going to hold the keg and Ken's going to break it, I think, is what the plan is. So, we're going to have him do that, then we're going to jump in the car and drive to Batavia High School, because Coach Perron has asked Ken to lead the football team out onto the field for the homecoming game. And then we're going to have some kind of an award ceremony prior to the start of the game, and we're going to honor four athletes from Batavia High School who won one of the state track meets statewide last May, I guess it was. So, we've got quite a night planned there, and then Saturday, where everybody's having their own reunions, ours is going to be at the Lincoln Inn, and so it should be a fun time, but we are just totally overwhelmed. Normally, high school reunions get 25 to 50 maybe, and we're already up to 83, and we think there may be some more still coming. So, it's nice to see that there's all these people, and a lot of them are coming from great distances. Some have not been here physically in 50 years. So, it'll be real interesting to see their reaction to the old hometown if they haven't been here since 1967. So, that's what's going to happen here for the rest of the week. So, if you see a bunch of entourages going around, because we have to put the convoys in place to move all these people from all these various parts of town, but we'll, I'm sure, take care of it, no problem. So, that's my report. Alderman Brown, you want to make the motion?
I'm over to adjourn the city council meeting.
Second. Motion second. Kirk, take a voice vote?
Call in favor?
Aye.